Good evening. This is the Tuesday, February 18th, 2025 regular meeting of the Township Committee. The notice requirements provided for in the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied. Notice of this meeting was properly given by transmission to the Asbury Park Press, to River Times, and by posting in the Middletown Township Municipal Building, and filing with the Township Clerk, all on January 9th, 2025. Committeeman Clark.
Here.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Here.
Committeeman Sedembreno.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Here.
Mayor Perry.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to honor our troops serving worldwide, defending our constitutions, freedoms, and way of life. Thank you. First item on tonight's agenda, we have a presentation recognizing Middletown High School's South Wrestling Program for winning the 2025 Shore Conference E-Division Championship. At this time, I'd like to invite the team to join Mayor Perry at the front of them.
All right. South Wrestling, what's going on? How we doing? How we feeling?
Good feeling.
Feeling great.
Feeling great. Feeling great. When we saw the news and all of you being designated and earning your spot as Division Champions, I said, let's bring the team in. I didn't realize High School South was gonna be here. But on behalf of the Township Committee, gentlemen, ladies, give yourselves a big round of applause. Before we get to the main attraction where someone gets to pin Deputy Mayor Hybel right here. On behalf of the Township, I want to congratulate all of them. You know, we often talk about what it means to be a champion, what it means to be a team. And especially for a sport like wrestling, it's one of those where you're out there and you're competing against, you know, some heavy opponents, some big-time legitimate opponents that are out there one-on-one. But in reality, it's a team effort. It's a team effort, and it takes a team to be Division Champions. And you all are part of that championship. So I want to congratulate you, want to congratulate the coaches. One thing I always do for every single one of these meetings is I make you look at your parents/guardians and say, "Thank you."
Thanks.
Excellent work, okay. Because they are the ones taking you to and from practice, to and from your matches. So remember that they are a big part of your success, and you owe a big debt of gratitude. Right, moms and dads? All right, Coach Matt?
Yes, hi.
He said he had a prepared speech.
No, no, I should have prepared a speech, I said.
Okay.
I knew you were gonna say it again. So, again, we came out of last season pretty well. We made a lot of goals going into this season. Again, every individual, again, from managers to coaches, to the girls' team, to the boys' team, to all the parents in the room, anybody involved in the program. We have put a lot of time in, if you were here this whole offseason. And it's paid off, okay? And again, through adversity, through any challenges that have been thrown at us, we've done really, really well. And again, I'm very excited to see what the program holds for the future, everybody up here, and the people who join the program in the future, and, you know, I can't wait. So another round of applause for everyone.
So again, I know we got a lot of young guys, we got some guys that are graduating, but, you know, a lot of teammates that are gonna be moving on. But here's the one thing that you should know. Today, you are a champion. Today, you have made it to the pinnacle of your high school career, not because you're sitting in Town Hall, but because you dedicated yourself to something bigger than yourselves, bigger than yourselves as individuals, but to a team. And you should realize that each and every moment, you gotta treasure. You gotta understand that that moment is gonna lead you to the next one. Earlier today, I was with Jason Marquis, who is a resident of Middletown. I know coaches who are the South baseball team, does pitching coaching for the South baseball team, was a World Series Champion baseball player. And he didn't talk about All-Star Games that he was part of, he didn't talk about the World Series that he won and the World Series that he lost. He talked about what it meant to grow every single day. Today is not about being a Division Champion, it's about what you're gonna use that to drive yourself for tomorrow. So enjoy this moment, enjoy the success, but realize that there's more to come tomorrow. And all of you will hopefully be back here again, celebrating that achievement as a champion. So give yourselves another round of applause. On behalf of the Township Committee, we want to congratulate Middletown High School's South Wrestling Team for winning the 2025 Shore Conference E-Division Championship. Congratulations on winning your program's first Division Championship since 2022, when your team was assigned a new division this year. You all set a goal to win this title and successfully rose to that challenge. We're proud of you for all your hard work, your countless hours that you dedicated to making this happen. So keep moving on to the upcoming tournament, and know that Middletown will be rooting for you. Best of luck, signed, Mayor, on this day. Congratulations, Middletown High School. All your parents are gonna want a picture in a second. So you gotta hold tight, take a picture, and then we'll get you out of here. So bear with us. Coach?
We gotta social.
Yeah. Together a little bit. You gonna make it or not?
Everyone ready? All right. One, two. One, two, three. Awesome, congratulations. Now please pose, because your parents and guardians are gonna take care of them too.
All right, let's give it up one more time. All right, let's go, let's go, let's go, let's go, let's go. And then Hybel, get down here, you're getting pinned.
Goes on three, ready, one, two, three.
All right.
We're gonna take a two-minute recess so that everyone can leave and we'll re-adjourn. Next on our agenda, we have a proclamation for the record recognizing March 2025 as Women's History Month in the Township of Middletown. At this time, I would like to ask the Township Committee to adopt a consent agenda that would include Resolutions 2588 through 25113, removing 25103 for a separate vote.
Motion to approve a consent agenda.
Second it.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to approve consent agenda. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve Resolution 25103 that was removed from the agenda, a resolution authorizing the award of contract for professional engineering services for Bodman Park Field Improvements.
Motion to approve, second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembreno.
Recuse.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to approve the resolution with the recusal noted. Next on our agenda, we have approval of minutes. The minutes for the January 1st, 2025 reorganization meeting, the January 21st, 2025 regular meeting, and the February 3rd, 2025 workshop meeting.
Motion to approve, second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to approve minutes. Next on our agenda, we have public hearing of proposed ordinances. Ordinance 2025-3450, calendar year 2025, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank, NJSA 48:45.14.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2025-3450. Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second it.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to approve this ordinance on second and final reading. Next on our agenda, we have introduction of proposed ordinances. Ordinance 2025-3451, an ordinance authorizing financial agreement upon a portion of Block 1131, lots 31 and 32, TBA Block 1131, Lot 32.01, with Avalon Middletown Urban Renewal LLC, an urban renewal entity pursuant to the long-term tax exemption law, NJSA 48:20-1-ETSEC.
Motion to introduce, second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held March 3rd, 2025. Next, we have ordinance 2025-3452, ordinance authorizing financial agreement upon a portion of Block 1131, Lot 30, TBA Block 1131, Lot 30.01, with Exit 109 Urban Renewal 1 LLC, an urban renewal entity pursuant to the long-term tax exemption law, NJSA 48:20-1-ETSEC.
Motion to introduce, second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held on March 3rd, 2025. Next ordinance for introduction, we have 2025-3453, an ordinance authorizing financial agreement upon a portion of Block 1131, Lot 32, TBA Block 1131, Lot 32.02, with Exit 109 Urban Renewal 2 LLC, an urban renewal entity pursuant to the long-term tax exemption law, NJSA 48:20-1-ETSEC.
Motion to introduce, second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Deputy, I'm sorry, Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held March 3rd, 2025. Next, we have ordinance 2025-3454, an ordinance authorizing financial agreement upon a portion of Block 1131, Lot 31, TBA Block 1131, Lot 31.01, with Exit 109 Urban Renewal 3 LLC, an urban renewal entity pursuant to the long-term tax exemption law, NJSA 48:20-1-ETSEC.
Motion to introduce, second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held March 3rd, 2025. Next on our ordinances for introduction, we have 2025-3455, an ordinance amending summer camp fees and preschool fees.
Motion to introduce, second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held March 3rd, 2025. And last on the list of ordinance for introduction, we have 2025-3456, an ordinance authorizing stop signs at designated intersections within the Brash Farms Development, and designation of Brash Boulevard as a through street.
Motion to introduce, second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held March 3rd, 2025. At this time, we have Township Committee comments.
All right. Committeewoman Kratz.
Yeah, I just messed it up.
Oh, wow, wow. Good evening, everyone. So just real quick, just wanted to congratulate our wrestling team from South who is here. It's a wonderful achievement, and we're always so proud to have our athletes here in the building to celebrate something so wonderful. Also wanted to congratulate our first cycle of 5th grade students from our Alliance Leader Program, an after-school eight-week program that we have through our Middletown Alliance. We're really quite proud of it. We graduate nearly 500 students each year, and a peer leadership program along with drug and alcohol prevention information for them. So really important, so congratulations to our middle school students who are headed off to Bay Shore in the fall. Sit, Mayor, thank you.
Committeeman Sedembreno.
Mayor, yeah, I thought you were gonna look that way and then call me over here. Just wanna...
Thought about it.
All right, next time. Just want to echo Committeewoman Kratz's comments with regard to High School South. There were a lot of teenagers here in the room tonight at one time, but I think it was a good thing. And they represent Middletown well, and we're proud to have them as the next generation of leaders. And Mayor, like what you said, this is not the, their victory is not the end, but the beginning. I think it was a great comment, so that's all I have for tonight, thank you.
All right. Committeeman Clark.
Thank you, Mayor.
Have I left you anything, or have they left you anything now that I put you at the end here?
Yeah. Well, I first want to echo my colleagues up here in congratulating Middletown South on their achievements. This year was a fruitful year for wrestling across Middletown. Middletown North had a very successful season as well, so it was nice to see the young men and women at both schools doing so well. Other than that, I'm good tonight, thank you.
All right, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, I don't know why the boys didn't want to wrestle you, but next time we'll get them in here.
Nervous.
I just, I gotta give just hats off to Ted and the team. You know, great job with the snow, the ice, the trees, just a lot of stuff going on for you, so I appreciate, please tell everyone fabulous job, so thank you, Ted.
Okay, all right, thank you. I just want to echo all my colleagues' comments. Couple things, Ted, seriously, great job. It feels like it's done nothing but rain, snow, ice, rain, and then now trees are falling, wind. The Columbia Bank sign fell over, I don't know if you saw that today, did you see that? So, but seriously, great job. Tell all our crews that have been in overnight, I know, working. I also want to just touch briefly on the Township's newest program called Wellness Wheels. It is, we are the first town, and I want to thank the Township Committee for this. At our last meeting, we approved a resolution authorizing Uber, a partnership with Uber. As many of you know, towns across America have been getting opioid settlement money, and those funds are coming in, and it can seem easy to buy things, capital things with all this money that's coming in. But if you're not reinvesting this money into the issue that was caused because of it, it's an absolutely irresponsible thing to do. So I want to thank the Township Committee for partnering with Uber, and for individuals, Middletown residents, that are struggling with opioid addiction, that are in need of mental health services. You can now call the Township, free of charge. We will order you an Uber and get you to the doctor's appointments that you need, the counseling that, appointments that you may have, because the number one in working with our judges, with our prosecutors, with our public defenders, the thing that comes up the most is access to care. And when people do not have the ability to get from their home to their counseling session, to their treatment, only bad things come of that. And now with the use of this money, not only are we turning around and saying that we want to get out there and further help our residents that are addicted or that need that mental health counseling, this program is the definition of that, and the first town in the county to do something with that. So I want to thank the Township Committee again for partnering with Uber and doing that collaboratively together. And just one other shout-out that I wanted to make. Over the weekend, I went over to the old Middletown train station, the original train station, which we had just signed a lease agreement with a few months back. The Middletown Historical Society has now moved in to the old train station. They had at least 60 people for their session the other day come through and hear about all the renovations and efforts that the Township in collaboration with the Middletown Historical Society will be making for our train station over the course of the next few months in anticipation and in celebration of America's 250th birthday next July. So I want to thank Ray Veth and Tom Valenti, Peter Van Nordwick, and all the members of the Middletown Historical Society for really putting on a great display. They have another event coming up next week with Rick Gefkin called "The Battle of the Navasink", something I had no idea about. But in 1777, there was an actual naval battle on the Navasink River between British ships and American patriots supplying American Revolutionary War patriots with ammunition, and that battle happened right in the cove on the Navasink River where the Oceanic Bridge is now. So there's an excellent event that's coming up next week. You can check out our Facebook page, it has all the details listed. But something I wasn't aware of, and I don't think many people are aware of in this area, but something truly, truly amazing, so I look forward to that. Okay, with that being said, I'll open up for public comments. Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment may do so. I ask that you state your name for the record, and that you keep your comments to five minutes. At four minutes, I'll let you know that you have one minute remaining. I say that, you know I'm pretty lenient on these things, but let's try and keep it to five minutes. With that being said, any member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Yes, ma'am? Good to see you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Laura Smith-Staines, I'm from Titten Falls. I just wanted, as you know, I'm interested in the Exit 109 redevelopment, just a better understanding of what the plan is going forward. Last time I was here, Avalon Bay was the developer, now I see that's changed, just, you know...
They're still the developer.
They are still, it's urban renewals of...
Just their LLC. Their LLC name. But you see on public ordinance, 2025-3451, which is the first ordinance, it says, "With Avalon Middletown..."
Got it, okay.
"Urban Renewal LLC", it's just their LLC.
Okay.
It's a state company.
It's still the same. And then the items that were in the agenda tonight, it looks like it was just dealing with the Starbucks, right? And then the updating of the facades of the current office buildings. I didn't see anything about the apartment complex in there tonight, is that correct?
The, for the redevelopment plan?
Right.
We had already authorized.
Okay.
The last time you were here, we had authorized that already.
Okay, so this is, they're separate then, for the authorizations?
Well, it's multi-step plan, I guess is the best way to describe it here, and feel free to jump in whenever. But basically what occurred tonight was the Avalon Bay talking about the tax end of Avalon Bay, talking about the plan for the commercial side of things, the Starbucks that is going in the front part of the parcel, playing Starbucks, and then the tax payments for all of those entities, both commercial and residential.
Okay. And then my final question is on the tax exemption part. Can you just explain a little bit, like how it's beneficial to the town to have 30, 35 years of a tax exemption?
They're not exempt, believe me, they're not exempted from taxes.
Okay.
In fact, with this, they are withdrawing, it was a precondition of this, was that they are withdrawing five years of tax appeals? Five years of tax appeals that we're currently fighting in litigation, so that's been sitting there. But they're not exempt, these pilots do not exempt them from property taxes at all. That's not what a pilot does. It reframes it because it's an area in need of redevelopment, which gives us the ability to discuss the zoning, number one, right? And then also simultaneously, the tax breakdown of how that works, being able to get rid of the tax appeal issue that we have is a big component of it.
Okay.
But they are not exempt from property taxes.
Okay.
No way would they be exempt.
Okay, because it seemed like that was an option, like it was either an exemption or there was some sort of like, where they would pay a percentage of what their revenue was or something like that.
That's only during the construction. That's only during the construction time.
Only during construction, okay.
Kira, I don't know if you wanna add anything?
It's only during the construction time, and even during the construction time, they will still be making payments toward property taxes.
Okay.
And then after the construction period, the payments they will be making cannot be less than they otherwise would have paid under conventional property tax uh, calculations.
Okay, so what was the thirty, thirty-five-year thing then, what was that about?
The, the thirty years is just the terms of the pilot. You can only, I believe legally, you can only go thirty years on a pilot.
Correct.
Okay.
So um, so that's just the terms of how long this, this ordinance would last.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, alright. Any other member of the public wish to make a public comment? Yes, come on down.
Uh, Doug Tomchuk, Parkway Place. Um, I'm concerned about, uh, you know, two things, I was, you know, concerned about the taxes. It's really not clear, like, if there was someplace we could get a, a number of what the tax revenue would be under normal circumstances, like what the current buildings that are there have paid, and then what they would pay in a future scenario, it would make it understandable, because that is just-
She can tell you, Kira can tell you.
Yeah.
So it's actually written in the ordinance itself, um, so if you pull up the ordinance that was introduced today, it will talk about what taxes were allocated to each property under conventional tax allocation and calculations, and then what we estimate the actual tax payment they'll be making will be. So you'll be able to compare them and see that what they'll be paying is more than they would have paid under conventional calculations. But one thing to note is that because, and you'll see this in the title of the ordinances, it says, um, for example, Lot Thirty-One, TBA, Block One-One-Three-One, Lot Thirty-One Point Oh-One. These are new lots that are going to be created as a result of subdivisions. So we um, proportionally allocated what taxes they had paid on the old lot into each of the new lots, um, just by acres, um, by whether the building is gonna be staying on that lot or not. So it won't match exactly, but it was done by a calculation that, you know, we can explain in more detail. But the numbers that you're asking about are set forth right in the ordinance, as well as in the financial agreement.
Okay, I didn't get to see that until I was here on the phone, and it's too small to read. Um, so I had uh, two other concerns, one, the, the concerns is the River Walk. Is that only on the properties being listed, or does that also go into the woods that the Township owns? Because that leads right to the backyards of Parkway Place. And, you know, if you take people from this, this development there, there are three-hundred-and-forty uh, housing units, and bring them into our backyards, where, what are they gonna do there? Uh, cut through the yards to keep walking onto the road?
Yeah.
Um, so I'm very concerned about that, and I'm not sure seeing why there's, you know, that is uh, an advocate, why there's an advocacy for that.
No, no, nothing is being proposed to go into beyond any, any uh, uh, anything beyond the township, but in, in fact, the River Walk itself, um, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Tone, is not defined in, in the uh, in the agreement.
Um, it was in, I did see River Walk in the, and River Walk in the uh, several, two of them at least.
Only, only if in the end we decide to do so. But there is nothing planned as of this moment. There is no River Walk planned over, uh, as a part of the uh, um, any financial agreements or anything like that.
It's a whole separate project, i- i- if it ever happens, there's a lot of DEP permitting that would be involved in running a walkway along the river, as you can imagine. So uh, they're just committed to, to contributing to it if it ever gets built.
If we ever did it.
Okay.
And it's on only two of the five properties.
Okay, it does not go into the Green Acres property next door that was uh, previously the Ryder property?
It may, hasn't been determined yet, it could go onto the Township property.
Okay, well, that's, you know, I'm just trying to, you know, I'm hearing it's only the two properties there, so, you know, that-
But remember, these are two commercial properties. What Tony is talking about is Township-owned property.
That's what I was asking about, that's the one I'm really concerned with, that's the one behind me.
It may, but the public does have a right to access that property.
Yes, they do, yes. Realize it's Township property, yes. So, um, the other thing I was concerned about is, you know, I wasn't sure how much this process approves the development of the Starbucks, and, you know, the cars are gonna take shortcuts through the extended stay lot out, you know, they're getting Parkway Place traffic is, is crazy. The traffic studies that were done were pre, the gym being open, gym's at capacity now from what I understand. Uh, it's crazy trying, you cannot make a left turn out, you know, during hours of the day. Um, it is just crazy, there's, it's a high accident zone to begin with, we're introducing so many more cars. Uh, you know, and just introducing a commercial establishment like that that has high-through, but it just seems to me a, a little bit like you're asking for more accidents. Um, I think that traffic studies need to be considered in the approval of that, um, you know, in redone and considered in approval of that ordinance, or, or-
Well, they are, but the, the one thing that, what, what, and, and I certainly appreciate your comments, the one thing that is critical though to, I think for everyone to appreciate is the fact that that building is not, you know, and, and certainly when, when we started this process, was losing tenants left and right. JCPN L left, uh, Mazur left, I mean, th- this, this property was losing tenants, and that's why it was able to be designated as an area in need of redevelopment. So no matter what though, that office space was, the, the traffic was far uh, less because of really Bellworks stealing many of those tenants out of there. And number two, COVID killing it uh, even more, which is part of the reason why we had so many tax appeals on the property that the Township is currently in litigation over. So no, no matter what, at some point in time, there was either going to be, number one, they were going to say, "Well, sure, we'll buy this property, and we'll develop it into townhouses and apartments." And then imagine how many townhouses and apartments you could have placed on those three buildings, plus-
But that's, that's a hypothetical.
It's not hypothetical, it, it, it's actually-
It is, it is a hypothetical, it wasn't done, so it, we, nobody here-
Yeah, and, and, and this prevented that from happening.
Well, I don't know-
That's not hypothetical at all. That, that is, that is, that's a fact, that having this commerc, it's a fact, having this commercial- How, how, how do you figure?
How do you figure it's a fact?
Because if we, if the commercial space wasn't there, how do you think that so, a developer wouldn't come in and sue us for a builder's remedy suit and put hundreds, if not thousands, of townhouses there? And then you would have come back here and said, "The, the traffic is insane on Parkway Place."
Semantics, though, it, it, you use the term that, I said it was a hypothetical, it truly is a hypothetical situation. You have an attorney next to you, you can ask her.
It's, but-
That is by definition what it means, and nobody has applied for that, so it is a hypothetical situation.
But would you have been in favor of it had, in housing?
That's not the question.
I'm asking you just, I'm, I'm asking you a hypothetical.
I don't really need to respond to a hypothetical, just like you don't need to respond to my hypothetical, but anyhow.
Well, I have a duty to respond, and I think I have a duty to also say what is possible out there. And currently, under these ridiculous high-density housing laws that we have in this state, absolutely, it is not hypothetical that someone could come, have come in tomorrow and could have, had, have filed a lawsuit in Superior Court, built, doing a high-density housing project on that property.
Yes, they could have.
Okay.
But it's a hypothetical situation.
Can I just say, thi- this is why you plan ahead for these things, you don't wait till it happens, right? You plan, you anticipate the market, you anticipate the, the real estate market changing, and so you plan ahead for it. So this is, by adopting a redevelopment plan that allows a, a modification to be made to the site, you've now made those office buildings more viable, and more, more likely to be leased up rather than to be half vacant.
Yeah.
So, so that's why, so you don't wait till a disaster, you plan ahead for the disaster.
Can I also say that most people that, property owners that are trying to keep tenants in would be doing all the maintenance and, and putting in the new HVAC systems and, and fixing all the things that were the reasons that it got on the redevelopment list? So I'm gonna turn it against you there, too. You know, you're saying all these things are, you have to plan for those things. The, the people that maintain the properties had to do that, too, they didn't do it. So then now they get a, a redevelopment plan, so they get to put more warehouses in there.
But, but they did upgrade the buildings, that, that's part of the process.
It is.
Yeah.
But they could have done that all along.
No, no, because now the tenants were leaving. They didn't do it, that's why tenants were leaving.
That's why the tenants were leaving, because they didn't do it.
That's not why, that's not why.
But that, but that's not why Collier's left, and it's not why JCPN L left.
Do you think they went to Bellworks because the HVAC wasn't up to snuff? I don't think so.
They got, they get a better deal. They got a better deal, that's, that's why people move from office buildings. Lease ends, and it's why people leave an apartment. It's, it's, it's really not that, it's, it's not a, it's not a, an outrageous, like, belief to know that you get a better deal going to, to another spot.
Okay, I, I'll, I agree with that, you know, I'm not gonna argue that point, I don't know how that commercial leasing works, so I'm not gonna discuss that part, so, okay. But uh, you know, if, if it was rundown, it's because they didn't put the money into it to begin with, and therefore tenants leave. So, you know, you, it's like, you know, which came first?
Well, we, we've had empty office buildings in the past, uh, Four Ponds, building used to be on Middletown Linkcroft Road, that was empty, it wasn't empty because the building wasn't up to snuff.
And what happened to that?
It was empty because, Tone, there was no market for that. Now there's, you know, almost two-hundred townhouses on that property, right? Uh, the, the building where um, Sloan-Kettering is now, we were very fortunate. That building was empty for ten-plus years, it wasn't because the HVAC system was out of date, it was because there was no market to rent that building. We were lucky that, that Sloan-Kettering were, came along and took that, or else that would probably be five-hundred townhouses now. You know, so, y- y- we, we, we can't control the real estate market, we can try to be a step ahead to cre, you know, prevent worse things from happening. That, that, and that, that's what we're doing. As far as the traffic issue, this still has to go to the Planning Board for Site Plan Approval. They, they will do a traffic study, they will look at all the intersections, all the turning movements, and all the things that Planning Boards always look at as part of this project. And if there's traffic improvements that need to be made, they'll have to make them.
So could the plan for the Starbucks particularly be eliminated from the overall plan? Or is that, that part of the whole redevelopment plan, and it's, it's a package and-
That's what they're applying to build.
I, I really-
The Plan Board, Planning Board ultimately approves is Planning Boards to business, not ours, not the Township Committees.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the pu, yes, ma'am?
Hello, I'm Esther Nelson, I'm a Middletown resident. Um, I first wanted to say thank you for your service to our town, we appreciate it. I, I, I also wanted to clarify, the subdivision, has it happened already, or is it in progress? Because all these ordinances are assuming that the subdivision is approved and happens.
Correct.
I'm assuming is likely, I mean, I, I, I don't-
The subdivisions will all be part of their Planning Board application, that's why it says TBA. So it's taking the block and lots as they currently exist, and informing the public as to if and when the Planning Board provides that approval. The, the TBA, and that, what comes after that block, and what, what comes after TBA, that block and lot will be the new block and lot numbers.
And if you wanna see a map, the last page of each redevelopment agreement has the map of what the subdivisions will look like, except for the residential one, which as Mayor Perry mentioned, RDA had been adopted previously. So that one, the map is attached as the last page of the financial agreement. So you could see what the proposed subdivisions are.
And that's in today's packet?
It's in the actual agreements, it's not the ordinance, it's the actual agreement, so either it's in the packet or they're on file with the Clerk's Office.
Okay, and um, yeah, I wanted to just state there, you know, the agenda was posted on, on Friday, but uh, the, some of the attachments, so I, we hadn't have a chance to read all of the um, ordinances before today. So it's sometimes it would be, if we could have more time, I don't know if we'd have time to ask questions next-
You do, the, it's, today is just an introduction, it has not passed.
Okay.
At the next meeting, at the March third meeting? Okay, um, that, there is a, there is a public hearing on these proposed ordinances, um, which there, which you will have had time to review said ordinances, all of them, in their entirety, and then be able to come up and pose your questions to the Township Committee and to our professionals to elaborate more on any questions that you might have. And that's requ, uh, required by law.
And so I understand the tax abatement uh, pilot, it's, it's basically an incentive for the developers to invest so that they get a break on the total, no, so what, what is the purpose? I'm trying to understand.
Well, it's, it's hugely beneficial to the Township as well. Because remember, you are now setting and, and understanding what the, the uh, taxes will be on those buildings, on, on all of these entities for the next thirty years. Where currently, assessments go up, assessments go down, they fluctuate back and forth, right? So oftentimes, you'll see an assessment, okay? This year, our average assessment increased by eleven percent. Colleen, is that right? Okay, so it went up by eleven percent. What, what most people don't understand about the RDA program, or uh, um, RDP, RDP, RDA, RDP program is that when your assessment goes up, and the town's average is eleven percent, but you go up seven percent, let's say, and not eleven, most likely, you are gonna see your tax dollars, your, your required payment, either stay flat or go down slightly. Only when you are at or above that average assessed increase will you see an increase in your property taxes. That is the one thing people don't understand, they see, "My, my assessment went up eight percent, so now you are taxing me at an eight percent increase." That is not how the program works, it's, it's actually, well, in typical fashion, it's far more complicated than that. Just bear with me for, for a second, because this is, I'm bringing it home for you here. Why that's important is because now these businesses that have these commercial buildings, that have this new component, the Starbucks component, and the residential component to it, is that their tax, taxes are now squared away for the next thirty years. They don't stay the same, they go up as prescribed in the ordinance. But it is, it is never a moment where the town is making less money than it is today. So that is the benef, the benefit, and, and because you look around at, in Middletown, every time somebody, as they have the right to do, files a tax appeal, it costs the Township. And not only does it cost the Township, let's say we were to lose all five tax appeals, which might, might be unlikely on this property that I'm talking about. If we were to lose all five tax appeals, maybe we lose three, maybe there's adjustments made, not only does the Township have to pay the difference-
They lose the revenue, I understand, but lose what they might have earned, is what you're saying, if they didn't win.
But we have to pay the schools, too. So the Board of Education doesn't have to pay it, the Township does. The Township has to pay the county's portion back. So all of these dollars are now the town's responsibility. So the towns are always the one on the biggest hook for why tax appeals are so dangerous, is because Colleen has to budget every single year for what we believe we might have in tax appeals. And she might have, she might have been a little bit high, but she might also be low, and then I have to go and do an emergency as to increasing that budget line. Pilots are great for big developments like this, because we said it, and for thirty years, we don't have to worry about massive tax appeals that only do one thing, cost you more money.
So in the ordinance, it doesn't talk about appeals, though, so is that part of the ordinance? They're not allowed to appeal by be entering into this agreement?
Not only do they have to drop their appeals, but they're-
No, but they can future-
They cannot.
That's, okay, that, I didn't understand that, so that's helpful.
And the percentage is specified, too.
Yeah, it says ten percent of their revenue, that-
No, not that one, that ninety-five percent of the, the revenue from the financial agreement, from the pilot, goes to the town, five percent goes to the county, so that's set also. So it, it is unusual, in the absence of redevelopment, that the town would get ninety-five percent of that tax revenue, which is accomplished only through this financial agreement.
Where currently, we only make up twenty-three percent, twenty-three percent.
Versus ninety-
Versus ninety-five.
Okay.
So for the Township, it is-
A lucrative deal.
Correct. And for the Board of Education, and I see one of our Board of Ed members back here, Mark is back here, the, the critical component to this is now the Board of Education is going to be able to certify every single student that comes out of this residential portion, and not only will they make more money per student than they're currently getting, they're, they're making it and certifying it every single year. So the school district is actually gonna be gaining more revenue than it would previously receive on a pure, on a per pupil basis.
Related to that comment, at a previous meeting, I, it was discussed that there'd be expected low numbers of students in this property, so that's somewhat a little inconsistent with the argument that we're not expecting many students. So even if it would be a higher rate-
If it's one student or ten students, they certi, they certify a list, and they send it to us, because we did not want to say to the school district, "Well, you're out of luck."
Yeah, okay, let's just explain that, because there he's being modest about that, you know?
Okay.
Normally, in a pilot agreement.
Tony doesn't normally say that about me, so I'm gonna let him go.
Normally, in a pilot agreement, the Board of Education gets zero. In this agreement, the township said, we will pay you back for every student you generate that's generated from this development, which we don't have to do. And you I you probably won't find another town that's done that with a pilot agreement. We've said if you generate fifty kids, we'll reimburse you the cost of fifty kids. If it's twenty kids, we'll reimburse you the cost of twenty kids. That's not a requirement. That's just something that was really invented here for this agreement. So the Board of Education doesn't lose a dime. Uh, and that never happens with pilot agreements normally.
And 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 the other concern was, well, Linkcroft Elementary is overcrowded. And that's a legitimate point. So these children will be, uh, no other changes other than these uh any kids that come out of this specific development, no kids on Parkway Place or anything like that, would go to River Plaza Elementary rather than go to Linkcroft Elementary.
Where is that documented? Because I haven't seen that written anywhere.
I s- well, we needed to get through the pilot before we could approve the policy in order to do that. So.
How I mean, I hear you said said that before, and so how could you, you know, I'm trying to understand that that's been decided. But how is it decided if we haven't even approved the plan? So and if it even if it's decided on.
Because we were never going to approve a pilot on a residential uh development without having that understood uh by the Board of Education. That was never going to happen. We 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 don't want to, every month, we meet with the Board of Education. And we have a shared services committee, which meets, discusses the different topics that impact each other. Um, and it's led to very productive things being done. This was one of them. I wasn't going to surprise the Board of Education and say, hey, by the way, we're we're doing this pilot agreement and you're getting nothing. Um, that that's that would just be irresponsible. So, I mean, up until Friday, we were finalizing these these agreements, um, because there's a lot of back and forth that goes in between these two. So what's what's critically important is they're still not passed. So it would be irresponsible and disingenuous, really, on the township committee's part to pass a a a policy and resolution saying what I'm telling you right now and not have this done. Um, that just that just wouldn't wouldn't be appropriate, at least in not in my opinion, it wouldn't be.
All of this is done under the Local Redevelopment and Housing Act, which, as Mayor described previously, is a process. And there are steps in the process that are laid out by the statute. So the first thing that happens is the investigation to determine if it's even an area in need of redevelopment. Then the township committee, you know, if the planning board recommends it, then designates it as an area in need of redevelopment. Then you can enter into a redevelopment agreement, then and only then can you enter into a financial agreement. So each of these steps has to take place, and you can't put the cart before the horse. You can't enter into an agreement or even, you know, document what will be before the prior step takes place, because you wouldn't want to presume, for example, that even these ordinances are going to get adopted. There's going to be a public hearing. There's going to be discussion on it. And so if they get adopted, then you can take the next step, but you have to take the prior step before you can take the next step.
That that makes complete sense, but what I'm asking is if it's if there's a discussion that needs to happen to get through these steps, there still should be some documentation, even if it's proposed about, for example, that the students would go to a different school.
As soon as this, when and if this ordinance passes, there's no there's there's no reason to put to do that prior to an authorization that this can even happen by this governing body. Right? But we also have to be thinking simultaneously, because if we sit here and we pass this and then six months goes by and we say, oh, yeah, we forgot about the Board of Education, that you just heard the process of how we it how long it takes to get to this point that we're at.
Oh, it takes years. I know.
Only government could figure that out, right? And 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 that's what we up here have to say to ourselves as individuals that have to vote on this. I'm comfortable with this so long as I know that we can legally do what I'm saying about the residential portion of the pilot. Right? And I think that that's good for the public to know, and I think it's good for the township committee to know that that's what we're working on. And and while government is slow, we don't have to be. We can work in parallel action with with what is happening. Um, because it it would be six, eight months before you were able to get something done, and the Board of Education is not going to sit there and say, don't give me your money. Mark, you okay with that? All right.
And just to clarify, um, if if there's going to be five uh subdivisions, so are they? And the development is if one part gets approved, the other part might not. So, for example, the the um housing complex and the building refurbishment separate from the Starbucks coffee, is it are they all contingent on each other or could some of them?
They'll all be heard at the same time.
So it's possible that that, for example, the the coffee drive-through might not happen, but the other ones would?
Anything's possible. I'm not a member of the planning board, so I'm working. I used to be. But uh but I I'm not a member of the planning board. So the planning board will have the opportunity to speak with the engineers, the architects, the planners, the traffic engineers, all those individuals will be asked to come up, I mean, Kevin's a member of the planning board, will be asked to come up and testify and give their presentation, at which point any of the nine members of the planning board can ask their questions. Um, but I I don't I never ever comment on a planning board application, because I never want there to be prejudice that the mayor or a member of the township committee said something about an application prior to a decision being made, and I think council would agree.
Yes, and I might I would add something that maybe would help explain it. The the redevelopment agreement and the redevelopment plan, it essentially establishes the zoning for the property. But it their local redevelopment and housing law doesn't replace any municipal land use law. So just as another property would, once even if it complies with zoning, would still have to go to the planning board, so too do these. So it's just it's what would usually happen. It's just that the redevelopment plan sets the zoning for the property.
And they happen to be all concurrent as opposed to phase that these different projects is is what.
They'll be they'll be heard uh as as a a one's one application.
Okay, so it's it is one big application. Okay, that's what I wanted to.
Simultaneous, yeah.
And and.
Because they all impact each other. It would be, it it wouldn't, it it actually doesn't help the public to not hear the residential and the commercial simultaneously. Because they're because they're going to interact with one another.
And 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 for the so for the record too, I just wanted to clarify in Linkcroft, we don't have any drive-through um eateries or 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 coffee, anything like that. And and I think there's been a lot of people in town that had felt concerns about drive-through in into feeding into five-twenty, so I I wanted to just put that on the record.
Yeah, understood. Um, you know, that's why there's no McDonald's there anymore. Uh, yeah. As a as a former River Plaza resident, I I I get that. I get that. But thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other member of the, Melanie, come on down. Are you with the Linkcroft Village Green? Oh, wow.
Actually, tonight I'm speaking on their behalf.
Okay.
Melanie Elmer-Gar Green Tree Terrace in Linkcroft. Um. Today, I'm representing the Linkcroft Village Green Association. As you know, a large part of our mission is to improve road safety issues in Linkcroft. Our members in Linkcroft residents are very concerned about the driving conditions on County Road five-twenty Newman Springs Road. I've spoken about this with this board in previous meetings, and the LVGA has worked with county engineers and Middletown police to identify contributing factors. Police in particular have been very helpful. Uh, we're especially concerned because many accidents have occurred at exit one oh nine since the exchange was redesigned and Lifetime Fitness and Red Bank Vet opened. BFJ Planning, the consultant hired by Middletown to update their master plan, said, quote, "There is a need for intervention in making safety on five-twenty a priority due to the high number of accidents. Especially troubling are the number of accidents at the newly configured exit one oh nine." They added, "We are too car-centric. But looking forward, the conditions are likely to worsen with urban renewals, multifamily residential development, and the Starbucks drive-through planned for the south side of exit one oh nine. At the last county commissioners' meeting, I asked them to be proactive and take a hard look at the five-twenty corridor, the accidents, the speeds, the driving behavior, the road configurations, and move forward with a safety study so that they can improve safety and be prepared to make the proper adjustments to any development plan at exit one oh nine. Tonight, I'm asking this township committee and its boards to work with the county on this. The LVGA has been analyzing accidents at exit one oh nine for the past several years. In twenty twenty-four alone, there have been numerous accidents in the area of exit one oh nine. These are just the accidents reported on five-twenty east and west. We know many accidents go unreported, and we have experienced close calls near exit one oh nine. Uh, Parkway entrance north, uh, five rear end strikes, two running red lights, one side swipe. Half-mile road, thirteen rear end strikes, um, four running red lights, three side swipes. And at Shoals Drive, rear end strikes are ten, running red lights are four, and side swipes are three. In the area of Shoals Drive, there have been numerous hit and runs, because they can jump right on the parkway after hitting you. Um, major accidents, three, four car pileups. Uh, several accidents occurred due to road debris, um, oil in the in the road, debris falling off trucks, hazardous road conditions like that, and sun glare is also a big factor. It's been noted in several of the reports. Um, so while your planning board will look at the experts' opinions on road level of service and rate it A through F as to how many cars the 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 road can handle, um, for the number of cars passing through the area, uh, the acts the accidents are a key component that they really don't look at. Um, this board should be gathering that information on the safety issues, uh, because all these vehicles and the new vehicles that are coming will confront those safety issues. So I'm asking tonight if this board would agree that they will work on this initiative, and I'd like to hear from all five, well, all four of you um, to see if we can have some commitment to um to looking at this.
Well, I I Melanie, I I mean, I think I could speak on behalf of everybody. We've been working with the county for all eight years I've been on this township committee with different initiatives. Uh, we've purchased right-of-ways to make that possible. We've done the very things that the LVGA has asked for. Um, you you know, if if you asked somebody in Port Monmouth, should we have spent five hundred thousand dollars on an easement in Linkcroft? They would say no, right? So I I don't want it to come off, you know, your your comments to seem like we've ignored that. Five-twenty is a county roadway, and we have taken on part of the financial burden and authorization to ensure that five-twenty becomes safer, but.
How how is how is that? Five-tw- I'm talking about exit one oh nine specifically. I don't want to get project creep. I just want to look at.
Exit one oh nine, exit one oh nine is is a is not an authority of the county, and it's not an authority of the township committee. It's an authority of the New Jersey Turnpike Authority.
Correct, and I think they need to be part of the conversation, because they caused a lot of the problem by allowing cars to quickly get off the parkway, go straight across to Shoals Drive.
Okay, I hear you. I I some and I respectfully disagree just a little bit, because there are often times where where and like I mentioned, when I lived in River Plaza, I knew exactly what I had to do when I came off the parkway and where I needed to go. And people become creatures of their own habit. How many of us drive home and you know you're you're getting there, but you've done it a million and a half times that you know exactly where you have to ease up, where that blind spot's going to be uh on on a certain road, where traffic's going to back up? People all of a sudden were new to exit one oh nine. And that entire change of how one oh nine exited off of the parkway was different. And so so I think that some of the data is a little bit skewed. It's not wrong. It's just skewed because it doesn't look at now what is happening over there. Not what happened six weeks after the change of the um of the intersection looked like.
You know, a good a good example uh is um when they first made the change at at uh Route thirty-five in Taylor Lane.
Yeah.
We got so many complaints that, oh, my God, it's so unsafe.
No one knows how to drive.
And for the first year, there were there were quite a few accidents there. I haven't heard of one in a long time now, because people got used to. It was a big change, for sure, and for a while people were unsure of of it. The same thing at one oh nine, you know, I I I think that it was a a big change uh there, so that that definitely impacted it. But the traffic accident data will be looked at when there's a traffic study done for the planning board. They will look at traffic accident.
Okay.
Data, and if there's if there's a particular design issue that's maybe contributing to that, that can be part of the road improvements that have to be done by the developer.
Just like we've done in other redevelopment projects where we've said, you want to do this? Sure, that's great. Well, you have to do a a RAB or you have to do something to improve the traffic safety that will go into this into this new redevelopment. And those are conditions of approval for them. So, you know, I I was, like I said, I I don't disagree with you, but I also think that there is a there is a a time that you have to look at data and say, okay, now everyone's gone through this intersection for whatever period.
Years, I think. Right? I think it's been five years.
Uh, has it been that long since it got completed?
I mean, I you can just you can subtract COVID, I guess, and say not as many people used it then, but.
I don't think it's been five years since it was done.
I remember being at the library for that meeting. It might have been twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
Well, I I.
Let's find the exact date, because it it's been several years. I mean, I.
No, no, it's been it's it's been some time, but but regardless, the what is the traffic data say today versus what did it say right after it was it was completed? And I'm going to say that that traffic data, just like Taylor Lane, that Tony mentioned, is significantly different than it was when it first began.
I'm going to compile that you for for you and compare it to what I just told you for twenty twenty-four.
We have police and a traffic bureau that can do that for us, but.
Well, you know, it's all in the narrative. You really like the report itself doesn't really tell you what happened. The narrative does, and I don't know, they'd have to look at it by hand to really understand the nature.
Well, I'm going to look at how many accidents occurred between X state and X state, and I'm going to look at the.
Some of them are stupid. They're like a deer strike or, oh, I was checking my cellphone and I was, you know.
Right.
But but in my example, I didn't look at the numbers. I gave you true accidents. I eliminated.
Our police can do the same thing. You're just getting the data from our police department.
I'm getting the data and I'm looking at every single accident, compiling the data on a spreadsheet, and then looking at the narrative to understand if there's extenuating circumstances. For instance, one of the worst accidents was because of oil spill, and there was a second accident that was uh near the Navy Road, because some truck came through and spilled oil all along five-twenty west. Now, is that really an accident that we should include in the numbers? It was, um, you know, beyond their control. So it I think it warrants looking at the details of what really happened with any accident. And what I'm telling you is that I watered down just the true user errors and uh criminals, you know, because everyone had, uh, you know, many of them were issued citations.
Okay.
So I don't know. I'm just asking for you to just have those conversations with Joe Ator and um Director Arno and ask them just.
There's not a day that goes by that doesn't that Tom and I don't talk about the different aspects of the town that are being reevaluated, redone, the projects being completed. Joe Ator, I I think I speak to Joe more than I speak to my wife some some weeks, um, because of the projects going on. Um, so it it it's it's a speed dial type of thing with with Joe Ator.
All right, well, just promise me you'll keep a pulse on this just like we do, and that we can be proactive. We can get these corrections made. If everything goes through and everything passes as they want it, we're going to have a bigger problem. We don't want a bigger problem. We want to take a step back, create some traffic calming uh devices there that will slow people down, you know?
And I agree. And and again, my my point that I that I was making earlier was this is a proactive step to keeping cars out of there. That is that is part of my point is that seven hundred apartments could have been possible there. So let's stop seven hundred apartments from going there, because a builder and and here, a builder could easily sue us, could have sued us on this parcel and stopped us from and and stopped any commercial development from occurring. And then you would have been back here, and I would have said, but we could have had commercial there. So that's that's the 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 catch twenty-two that you're always in when it comes to these these parcels is there's there is a an absolute possibility. there is an absolute possibility that someone could have done that on this parcel.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? John, come on down.
Hey, John.
John Spennelli, 91 Burlington Avenue. Kind of not related to what was going on, but I had a question about the ordinance two years ago about banning the short-term rentals, the 175 days. I was just, I wanted to ask, would the township committee ever reconsider amending that ordinance or creating a new one to allow like a permitting process for Airbnbs? Or just limiting it to like Friday to Sunday?
I mean, at this point, I'm speaking for myself here, I'm not speaking for anybody else. I had these conversations with the apartment association, I had them with Airbnb, discussing them. This is, it comes down to a governmental, and in my opinion, a bureaucratic process that then ensues because of that. And I have nothing against Airbnb, I have nothing against short-term rentals. My biggest concern, honestly, from the ordinance that you're referring to, that ordinance, in part, changed, a new app came on to the App Store, and that app allowed people to rent out their swimming pools, okay? Now, there's ordinances that we have currently in town, that if you're a community pool, you need to have the health department come inspect it, you need to have all the required permitting that goes along with it, lifeguard, and no one is following those. So one of the big issues was people in several neighborhoods throughout the town were renting their backyards and their pools out, and that is not allowed. That is not allowed, and so that was a clarification of the short-term rental ordinance to stop apps like Swimply, I think is what it was called, right?
Swimply or something.
Swimply, something. And that was really the crux of why we amended the ordinance. You know, again, I have nothing against Airbnb, I really don't. But I think that Middletown is a, it's really and predominantly a single-family home area, and when you start having these short-term rentals, there are CO questions that you have to have. There are things that in towns, like Highlands, I know allows for Airbnbs, but that's a small town, you know, that's not 20,000, 30,000 houses in our township. So, but that clarification was more on the swimming pool recreational aspect to it. All right?
Yeah, no, I was just curious about it, because I could see both arguments, like slippery slope argument of it, but, you know, I was just trying to look for something to, if I'm not in my house or my room for a couple, you know, days at a time, make some extra side money on it, so.
I-
That's why I wanted to bring it up.
I hear you.
Never be a consideration.
All right, well, I'm going to look up your address on Airbnb, John.
Don't worry, somebody's already looking for you.
Yeah. There's some tough cookies upstairs looking at that site. All right, any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Okay, seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and adjourn.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedgbrino.
Committeeman Sedgbrino had to leave for an appointment.
Sorry. Deputy Mayor Hybel.
But if you want me to say here, or yes, Karen. My vote is yes.
Motion carries to adjourn. Good night, everyone.
All right, have a great night, everybody. Thank you all.